The last one.
Good morning, everyone. We're going to get started. So, welcome to our Committee of the Ball meeting, the first one for 2025. Before we begin, I just like to remind everyone that this meeting is being recorded in the township YouTube channel. I'm Martina G. Harvick. I'm the clerk. We'll be electing a chair shortly, so for the time being, I'm just going to call the role. If you could please raise your hand to instate your presence, may I call your name? It would be appreciated. Mayor Watson has sent regrets. Deputy Mayor Nelson.
Present.
Present.
Council Johnson.
Present.
And Council Member has sent regrets. On the staff side, we have our management team here. Everyone will introduce themselves later, so I'm not going to bore real estate, but I'd also just like to note that Tandy Francis, our intern for the season, is here with us. Welcome, Tandy. Thanks for joining us. Some of the four of the committee attendees, I'm going to call the meeting to order. It is 10:02. And so now we move to the election of the Chair and the Vice Chair. Do I have any nominations for the position of Chair? Deputy Mayor?
I'd like to nominate Counselor Kamau.
Counselor Walker, would you accept that nomination?
I would, yes.
Is there a secondaire for the nomination? That nomination passes? Is there a nomination for the position of Vice Chair for the committee?
I nominate to Aaron. Also.
Deputy Mayor, would you accept that nomination?
Sure.
I just heard I have a secondaire. Deputy Mayor, you are the Vice Chair of the committee, and I'm now going to pass the meeting over to our new Chair, or our returning Chair, to say, Counselor Walker.
Thank you very much. All right. Good morning, everyone. Thank you. Welcome down. I hope you enjoy this for your, part of your day, and we'll just move along as we always have. When you're done your section, if there's nothing in someone else's reports that you need to stay part, feel free to leave and get on your day-to-day activities. The committee has, I'm guessing, read over everything so far in all of your reports that we got, so if there's anything new to add or whatever, we would be very, very happy to hear it. Otherwise, we can just be cool with what's on there. So, that being said, welcome again, everyone, all the members that are here today. And we'll start with our land acknowledgement. We respectfully acknowledge that we are on the lands which are part of the 1818 Treaty 20 and the traditional territory of the initial back bands of the great Ojibwa Nation. We offer gratitude to the Ojibwa for their care and knowledge of the lands on which we work, live, and enjoy. We will honor and respect their teachings and our treaty obligations as we grow together. Committee members, is there any disclosure to your community or interest? Saying none, adoption of today's agenda, please. Deputy Mayor Nelson, Council Johnson. Any discussion? All favor. Period. Thank you very much. All right. Delegation's position and presentation, we have done for today, so we'll loop right on to the manager's update report. Again, thank you very much to all the managers for putting this together for us. And we'll start right out with the Parks and Recreation Department. So, Mike, you're on. Thank you very much.
Perfect. Thank you, and good morning, and to the Chair. I just, I know you guys all have my report in front of you, so I'm not going to speak on too much of that. I'm going to more focus today on the request for our user listings and the possibilities.
Everyone has paper copies.
Okay. You have a paper copy in front of you on that and the possibility of the reduced hours with the Miskin Law opening up. So, we did create a comprehensive list of all of our users. This is from January 1st, 2024 to December 31st of our actuals of our usages. As you can see, we do have a number of users. For the egg side, we're going to focus more on that. We had approximately 54 different user groups, and that was not including the 38 private rental states. At the General Community Center and Warsaw Community Center, we had, between the two of them, we had 2,644 and a half hours of ice rented for the season. We did create a list, and we did staff, did talk to a number of our users about their possibilities of using the ice at Miskin Law instead of us. Of that list of those user groups, we had four of them talk about probably reducing their hours with us. The four is the AAAP's, the Peterborough Hockey Association, Hero, and Hero Hockey Association. While they did say that they're likely have some ice at Mr. Mom, they did state that they would actually like to still retain some ice with us. What that is, we don't know at this time until next season. So, of those hours that we're talking about, between the two facilities, approximately 285 hours that they used in 2024. Going on to our other listing, at the beginning of the season this year, there was requests that we weren't, we were unable to accommodate. So, some of those was like the Peterborough Ice Cats. We weren't able to accommodate all their hours. And then we had Peterborough and, and it's more Girls Hockey Association, and it's more minor hockey looking, King Wolverines, Clever Kings, Lakefield Minor Hockey, and the Tombe Wolves, all looking to have ice with us, but we were unable to accommodate their requests. Based on their requests, it was approximately, on the low end, we did have a range, just depending on the dates that it would have fallen on. There, and that was approximately 390 hours that we were able to accommodate. The problem with us not being able to accommodate is essentially we did have little extra room. As you can see, there's about 400 more hours rented at Duro. But those rent, those hours are coming from later in the evenings. All these groups that we were unable to accommodate were youth groups, so they're not willing to come so late. So, I guess the big question, the big thing was is, are we going to see a reduction in hours with Miskin Law opening? I feel strongly that with requests that we're unable to accommodate, I feel we'll still be in good shape for this season. I am happy to answer any questions from my report or.
Thank you very much, Mike. Council Johnson, through the Chair, I'd like to add a couple of things. Now, you've got these ones that we weren't able to use. That's a good thing. But would you be sending your attention to us if they wouldn't request any more this year? Agreed. Now, we never know. With minor hockey, I understand that's a priority, and we never know what hours they want, and I can't see anything different than what they've got, and they're might even be someone wanting for the girls' team. So, I do know, but still know we should reach out to them to tell them that, you know, we're going to be scheduling down the road, and if they're interested, for them to keep their, for them to keep their name on our list. I think it'd be worth doing that. And the other thing is, I got actually, I know we got more hours later on with that. But basically, of what we, what we've experienced this year is not all we have. Is there, what's your hours that maybe we still can fill, like in every day and on the weekends?
Yeah, through the Chair, Council Johnson, there is like gaps a little bit, and a lot of it is like so at Warsaw, it's a little bit harder to get the evenings rented, and it's been like that three years. We do tell all their user groups that put in requests with us. We do provide them what is available, and it's just a matter of whether they can accommodate those. So, some of the, these requests from the other groups are other organizations trying to use us. Most of it is them trying to fill in practice times through the week. So, the weekends, they already have schedule games at their home facilities or away games. So, again, it leaves those, it harder to fill those times.
I understand that.
And as for like the groups that we were unable to request or accommodate, we have had the conversations about next year. And we, we do have a list of all of these users and emails and contacts. Once the ice season is done, we will be sending ice allocation requests and start working on that and have it finalized earlier this year.
Thank you. Deputy Mayor, any comments, questions? I'd like to, sorry, go through the Chair, through the Chair, just thanks for not all together.
Just a quick comment. 474,000 change for, for a year. That's pretty good for a small community like ours, and congratulations on pushing early to make that happen. Thank you very much.
Yes. Through the Chair, Mike, how would we make it up with the advertisements? By trying to get more and trying to get the system.
Yeah, through the Chair, I, I will pass this off to the CAO. We are looking to working with the students and the faculty, the program, even rather than what we've already done, but I'll let him touch on his meetings.
Sure. So, through the Chair, Council Johnson. So, right now, we're working, we're keeping the facilities open, and I know it's part of the work plan for the manager and, and when they have some spare time, they're making calls to try and encourage advertisements through the balance of this season. But having recognized that conversation in the budget, we took that relatively seriously. And I feel like there's some opportunity, I think, to streamline that process a little bit for us, and maybe look at what that program is and the kind of value it will provide to the local businesses. And so, we've engaged funding college, this program, and we're working, we're working with them right now to determine what kind of project could happen that would help us build out an appropriate sponsorship package, which may contemplate things beyond just a single season to sort of try to shore up some funding through that. So, we, we look forward to bringing a report back probably at the next committee, or what that program or, or what that project would look like. I think it's scheduled to happen, and we're in progress.
So, just to follow up on that, our Sunday Public Game at the moment, have we got that pretty well covered for sponsors?
Through the Chair, Council Johnson, at this moment, we don't have that filled up right now. We have made some calls, and we're going to keep, continue trying to secure the rest of the season with sponsors.
I'd like to move to, move to Council Johnson to share with, thanks, seven, Deputy Mayor Nelson, all favor. Thanks, Mike. Much appreciated.
Thank you.
Next up on our agenda, our Fire Chief, Charlie, Lord of the River.
Hi, good morning. I don't have much to add to the report that I have, but just a couple of things, dry hydrants. We are looking at, I think, two to the area one and Donwood, White Lake areas, or just working on a little detail to see if we can make that happen. Just to let you know, we talked about our learning contract with the Department of the Office. So, we have, this week, we're serving our class for our certification for HOHOPs. We have 10 of our firefighters in that course. In whole, we are teaching that in-house, and we just, our goal is to have more firefighters certified and testing in April. So, other than that, if there's any other questions, I'd be happy to answer them, or if you have something new.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Sure. Mike, on your, on the, the, the schedule you got there in the paper, Chuck, resist, also, why aren't you, CEO and the, and the fire, there, there must be 10 of them, right? We share a nine-month-old phone, but that's where they work. And you had a asking last night, so?
Yes, through the Chair, I'm, uh, a call for a propane. We're going to have some.
Okay. So, it looks like you're very busy.
It starts in the year.
Chuck, just one question. You mentioned the dry, so when you put them in this side, help any with their shuttle of refrigeration to spread it further across the township, or let just source the water that drops in that area?
So, it can do both, depending if we have, these are areas that we don't have publicly accessible dry hydrant. So, that would certainly help those areas for that reason, right, period, depending if you're residential or. So, that's why we're trying to, these are kind of tied in with, that might be paid by others, so that's why we're trying to work with some projects that might help us and the community and themselves, so.
All right. Thank you. Any comments, questions, through the Chair? Now, you said you, you had four new recruits. Does that put us in good standing in the old, the four of us?
Yeah, through the Chair, to Council Johnson, yeah, we have a full roster of around 65 firefighters.
Council, under, we see, thanks. All favor. All right. Thank you, Johnson. Appreciate it. Okay, all that works here. We can go from there and stand whatever is good for you.
Thank you, through the Chair. Everybody does my report, so I'll just touch on a couple items. Very busy with the winter maintenance this year. At one event, one event, November 10, December 14, January, we're currently sitting at six for February. We needed to respond to. Our sandal's been restocked just last week. We removed the snow in the village of Duro in Warsaw, Donwood area, we had to do some snow removal there, and we've been also back to Duro again just yesterday to repeat that again. We'll review both villages again after this winter storm. And just touching on the winter storm. Due to the environment Canada winter storm warning, municipality will be declaring a significant weather event this morning. This declaration suspends the standard timeline required for municipalities to maintain or provide their winter maintenance activities. There's also another storm moving in Saturday and Sunday, so we'll, we'll keep an eye on that and review as to why we're going to lift that. On the waste side, the hazardous waste events have been published, May 24th and August 16th. Also planned event pays, and they run from 10 till 2 each day, so. Yeah, that's the, the highlights of the report, so if there's any questions, I'm happy to.
There are no comments, questions, just through the Chair. Have we got anything with the scales up there that they hold?
Good question. I did want to touch on that. They were froze up. We were there yesterday, thawing them out, and they're there again this morning. Should be all good to go for, for today, so.
So, that's simply, how many are frozen up?
Just this past, yeah, they've been down for a couple of weeks now, so we've had shovels now, get the heaters underneath there thawed out. Should we be able to, we have one more corner, thawed, should be operational today.
Deputy Mayor, any comments? Lost for a minute. Sorry.
There's a question, but no.
It'll come to me. Sorry.
Just one comment, Jake, and it's something I've been asked numerous times, and I see you have it up here, the hazardous waste event. So, people say, well, what can I take in? Does it cost? So, can you elaborate on that a little bit of what the hazardous stuff consists of, and does it cost somebody to go and drop it off?
Uh, okay, there's, yes, through the Chair, there's no cost to drop it off. If residents can look on the website, as well as county website, it's a county-run program, so the county staff are on site to, to, to welcome or deal with any of the objects or items that probably in. And as well, they can inform them if there's something they brought that is not accepted. Generally, they can take it by their own accord for most things, if not all things are accepted there.
And just for the sake of, like, they're just saying here this one a little bit earlier, because we got the benefit of people that don't have internet or, or, you know, smartphones or stuff like that, but the neighbor might say, oh, yeah, I've done this, that question for you, like, it's paints and solvents and, and that type of thing that can be taken out of this, nothing. That's a separate day, whatever, it's just like basically liquid.
Any, uh, used liquid material. Any hazardous waste material, so if it's oil, it's paint. It can be a hat can, weed, killer spray. So, a wide array of things it can be. Electronics are not part of the hazardous waste. There's an electronics recycling bin up there that's open every day that the site's open. Yeah, so it's, it's anything. It can be like a spray can of bug spray, anything aerosol.
Perfect. All right. Thank you very much. Mayor, funny.
Through the Chair.
I finally remembered, Mike. Jake, on the, for the significant weather event. Just, just for everybody else in the audience and online, can you just explain how long you can keep that in place, especially where it's called? Or, or it's calling for pretty much still a big doodle Monday, I believe, so can you just explain how that works?
Well, we can put it on, we can put it into the fact 24 hours in advance of the storm, or an event, I guess, that would cause or lead to more time or delay times for, for maintenance. So, we can put it on 24 hours in advance, and then keep it on pretty much for as long as the municipality needs it on. It's not to be used for a lack of staff or, or those types of things. It's to do with a significant event that's going to cause a delay in the regular maintenance levels that, that residents or municipality generally provides. This can be a winter storm, it could be our, our windstorm we had last year, or two years ago. It could, it could be any, doesn't need to be wet, I guess.
Just follow up to that too, Jake. And, and sometimes when, when a serious event like this, weather event happens, we do declare an emergency or to delay them time limits. Sometimes some provisional funding will come with that if it's that serious. Is that correct?
Through the Chair, that's true. There is funding if there is a significant event that causes substantial damage and or resources.
That's true. One, one more, Mike, through the Chair, I, I presume that that law went on face, for Facebook and then be put on, on our Facebook, our Facebook page?
Through the Chair, yes, we'll be making an announcement later this morning, following the meeting, it'll be on our social media sites, as well as the township website.
Thanks, Senator. Thanks for that. Excellent. Yeah, through the Chair, you said oil. That's the hazardous waste. What kind of oil?
Used motor oil, hydraulic oil, any type of oil, cooking, cooking oil.
Furnace oil?
Uh, no.
Old furnace oil?
Furnace oil is, we, we accept used motor oil onsite. Furnace oil would have to be in a container of some sort, and it could be disposed of at the hazardous. Day, but it would have to be in a manageable container.
I'll make a little bit to. Thank you. Second, second, deep discussion. Any more questions? All favor. Thank you very much, Jake. Much appreciated. Been very long, we've been very well, very much, everyone. And we're on to the building department. Go on.
My phone, unfortunately, really loud, so. Yeah, thank you very much, committee members. Um, just probably a couple of highlights for me that, that I wanted to bring to your attention from my report. So, what is just the fact that we have a mandatory suspension maintenance inspection program due this year, so I know there's a lot of talk with discretionary one. And we are prepping our, our report back to council on, on, so we've reached out, counties doing the mapping, we've reached out to some third-party engineering companies. So, we, we have reached out to the third-party engineering company, we're looking at department, staff, resources, to try to get some costing to council, so we know what that, those inspection fees would look like. And the county's working on mapping for us to highlight the areas that council has access to, for him or for children's, and waterfront properties. So, we do see that coming to a close here soon and be back in front of council. That's for the discretionary program though, but we do have the mandatory one. And so, that's the one within the source water protection area, so those, we have to do our inspections every five years. 2025 is the inspection year. So, we are in close contact right now with project to identify not only the existing properties that, like I said, that we already do and have inspected in 2020, but we also have some new properties that are going to come up. And so, we're just getting those properties identified. We'll be sending our mailings out. The hope would be about March, the same as with the discretionary program usually runs, making sure that they are aware. And in this scenario, we are not, at this time, asking for a change in fees. We'll be a lost leader, in all honesty. It's a $75 fee to the property owner. But again, until we get kind of some of the other stuff sorted out, we're just going to leave those fees in the wall. So, we do anticipate that we have in this year. And probably one of the other ones that I'd like to highlight is just in the, in the last, second last point in my report, we talked about just some of the various development meetings that, that we've attended as a department. And that brings me down to my last point, which is, we are monitoring our, how our department and the allocation of our department time. So, we know that we want to be, we want to be full cost recovery. We want the, the people who use our services to permanently pay for our services and not to affect the tax base or the levy on, on kind of the standard operating year. And so, one of the things that we are seeing is that a lot more people are coming through the door, trying to seek kind of pre-approval for projects that they're going to have. And we, and we like this idea, and we want them to do this, but it does take a fair amount of staff resources, so we're just looking at what our time allocation is. And if we have to build in some fees into our user fee, bylaw or our building bylaw, in order to kind of account for that, and not just download it strictly to be paying for permits. And kind of make it a bit more of a user-based system, and that's just solely within the building part. Those are really my only two major highlights, unless there's any questions that, that the committee has through my report or anything else.
Thank you. We're going to go. Comments, questions, deputy mayor? One, two, three, go on. To the Chair, just your comment there, but charging more for, people coming in with requests and help with that, but on the other hand, we're there to help. I mean, I don't want to, things are expensive enough, that I want to see people, because they want to ask a question. You know, they, they got spent hours, sort of, ten minutes in the role or something, they help them understand the process, and hopefully we're not charged like that.
Through the Chair, Council Johnson. Thank you, Council Johnson. That does bring up a great point, and one, one of the things that we're trying Through the chair, Council Johnson, uh, thank you, Council Johnson, that does bring up a great point, and one of the things that we're driving to, we haven't tightened this pro- project up yet to know exactly where we stand, but I would agree that that the typical general questions and stuff, we do want to not have a fee to that, we do want to be able to be accessible to to the rate payer and make sure we get that. This is more of a preapproval, so on what we're going to offer a a decision and we're saying, okay, we've reviewed this site plan or this this and we're and we are saying, yeah, you can do this. And then they they can take that and that's going to help them through the permitting process. And so it's going to help us in our efficiency that way, but because we're recognizing with that a decision that we have to stand behind, that's kind of where it is, not just gen- general information. And so if it is general in nature and kind of, um, you know, someone has a couple of questions to to pick our brain, that that's our anticipation, it's right, it's no fee. Uh, we do want to be here for those type of things, it's more um for us to offer a decision, there's a lot of work uh that goes into to making sure that we, it's what we do in planning every day, and it's it's something that we have to do thoroughly in order to give the appropriate decision, because if we if we make a mistake there, um, you know, that's where the hiccups happen down the road, and so it just, it does have some time.
Then one more question to the chair, uh, the sewage uh uh plan that they were starting with, um, that's what we done through the building with the problem? And they take proper training to to understand people's concerns and what they have to tell people and everything?
Through the chair, Council Johnson, so the current program that that, um, I'm going to say we're implementing in March is the mandatory one. Uh, and yes, uh, only qualified building officials will be doing the work um onsite and and that will be kept in next. The discretionary system, which is something that we're still bringing back to council for what that program looked like, excuse me, um, we have looked at third party engineering. And again, we look at this as both staffing and it's just, um, when when we're done the report, I'll be able to to give you more on this, is could we have the staff to to do this uh the way we need to or the way it should be done? Do we need to bring in more staff for it or or do we need to get a third party uh engineering firm to be looking at it? And and that's more of the discretionary.
Any comments, questions?
Oh, just, I'll move the re- that we, that we report, but thanks.
Need a discussion, all in favor? Thank you, Paul, much appreciated. My name is Paul, I'm last, we call Christina, all yours.
Thank you, are we, you taking the microphone? Thank you, Chair Rock, members of the committee, you have before your report planning two thousand and twenty-five dash zero five, I'm just going to highlight a few things for the committee. I think most importantly, the red line version of the adopted official plan was posted on the county and township website, so on January fourteenth. Uh, there's an open house uh electronic public meeting that's scheduled for Tuesday, February twenty-fifth from four P M to five thirty P M. And then there's a hybrid public meeting that is scheduled for Wednesday, March fifth at nine thirty A M with county council. Uh, registration is required for both of those events and it can be done by contacting the clerk at the county of Peterborough. Uh, our township website has information for the public on how they can participate in that process and connect with the clerk. Uh, just a couple of other things, so our building and planning departments, they complete the source water protection annual progress reporting for the trans source protection plan under the Clean Water Act. Um, just because this is our first meeting of the year, I'd like to give a few numbers on planning inquiries, pre consultations and formal applications, they do not appear to be slowing down. Uh, our monthly pre consultation meetings are now booking into April. There are, uh, we did receive thirty-two severance applications last year, uh, which does exceed our yearly average of twenty applications per year that we've been calculating since nineteen ninety-eight. Uh, we did receive and process fifty rezoning applications last year, which is the highest number since two thousand and twenty-one, when we received seventeen rezoning applications. In terms of our subdivisions, both Donwood and Halls Glen continue towards clearing their draft plan conditions. Uh, with respect to the Real subdivision in Warsaw, the county is compiling draft plan conditions and planning staff are hoping to propose our draft plan conditions to council with a recommendation report very soon. The couple of things that were directed by council, planning staff connected with Peterborough County G I S department to develop a website for tracking active township planning applications. Our site is functional, but before we make it public, we're just waiting on a few minor adjustments um that we're working with the county on. Also, as directed by council, uh, our site plan control bylaw has been completed and updated and we are bringing a report on the site plan control bylaw to council on the eighteenth. And then similarly, we had utilized the services of D M Wills to support us with that update. We have also engaged D M Wills to review the existing shoreline bylaws in other jurisdictions and prepare a report outlining the findings along with a draft bylaw for council discussion, and we're hoping that will come forward towards the end of March. Uh, just a couple of other things, planning staff participated in the Peterborough County Technical Advisory Committee for the development of the watershed uh plan, the first meeting was in or was on November twenty-seventh, uh, the next meeting hasn't been scheduled for that yet. And I think finally, we did participate in a joint cohort of Pinridge District School Board and Peterborough, Victoria, Northumberland, Clarendon Catholic District School Board meeting with the county and the member townships on December tenth. And it was a good meeting, we exchanged uh ex- information and we had some good discussion on planning initiatives that are taking place across the county and with the school boards. So with that, I will turn it back to you, Chair Rock, for any questions.
Thank you very much, all my questions? The, through the chair, the question I have, the update on the new official plan, like uh the very small form, is there much changes towards my township?
Through Chair Rock to Councilor Johnson, um, specifically to the township, I would say no, the the changes that are redlined. So the document online shows exactly all of the changes that are being proposed, they're outlined in red in the in the text. Uh, there are changes to implement the provincial planning statement, the new statement that came into effect on October twentieth. Um, so it, a lot of the information was already in the official plan, it's just a matter of now the growth plan is no longer applicable, so some of the policies from the growth plan have been removed, so um there's no mapping changes that are proposed, so anything that has been designated on the land use schedules as it relates to the township is not changing.
We were? Oh, oh. Go ahead, go ahead, Paul. Uh, through the chair to members of council, I just wanted to acknowledge that this is Christina's final meeting with us, I know the mayor uh at council last week uh recognized Christina and her service uh to the corporation. Um, and she did that knowingly that she wouldn't be here today, but I just wanted to uh acknowledge uh that Christina brought her artwork. Uh, certainly during my short term uh tenure with her, she is pr- uh proven to be a consummate professional and a pleasure to have in the office, we're definitely going to miss her. Um, but I will talk to how we planted that that when I get to my, so I just wanted to sort of formally acknowledge Christina and her.
Thank you very much, very nice, um, and well deserved. Uh, I love two things, I'll see my, uh, first thing, and I think it's going to be before, so zoning, by the week teams are zoning by all, after the O P is finalized? Any idea how far down, all that may be, like is it a year away, two years away, six months away, ballpark, I don't need to be exact because I'm sure you don't have it.
Yeah, yeah, thank you, through you, uh, so the township does have mandated three years after the passing of the official plan to update the zoning bylaw. We would hope to start that process sooner than later, so with the hope that the province approves the official plan by the end of this year, I think you would be for sure looking towards next year at starting the update.
Very, thank you. And just touching on what uh our C E O Todd said, yeah, thank you very much for your service, I mean, I, it's around the whole town, so nice to go in there and talk to Christina because you know, you work with them, you help them out, it it gets, it's very nice to hear that as council um member that that that's how our office operates, and I mean, our whole office does, but when you hear that and you're leaving, I just want to pass that on, but certainly is nice to hear, we're really going to miss it, enjoy your retirement.
Thank you, I do, yeah, I do, yeah, I do look forward, I enjoy speaking with the public and I I love passing on information, whether it's information that people want to hear or they don't want to hear, sometimes we just have to deliver the news the way it is, um, but I I, that's the biggest part of my career that I really enjoy is dealing with the public and council, of course, and staff.
All right, thank you. Any other comments, questions?
Through the chair, through the chair, again, Christina, thank you very much, uh, it's been a pleasure, I've known you for a long time. And uh, you're always a bit of a pleasure to deal with and work with and and be around, so thanks for that and enjoy your retirement very much, you deserve it.
Thank you.
And uh, I just recall the same thing, thank you. Now, I'm just wondering, let's see here, I hear different power to be chased, different things that people can do. Now with us putting you ahead than you're now, I know I got to have to see always, if there's any way that you can take a spot like Trump does, instead of letting go, maybe for stay on. I wouldn't be my good looks and charm, I was. All right, I I recall the same, thanks.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, there's no other comments, questions, no questions, I'll make one to the chief reporter, thanks. Excellent, second, your second, any other comments, questions, all in favor? Excellent, thank you very much, and you are ready to ride until Friday, right?
Yes, I am.
You are?
Yes.
Excellent. All right, thank you very much, moving very long, Paul, I have a bar, you're on next turn.
Thank you, through Chair Rock, so that's council, uh, just a a few little things, um, and then if you have any questions on the report.
Uh, we will just be on a a short recess until we have a forum again, so I will just uh, very much appreciate it. I do a little bit of morning, Paul. All right, thank you very much, we will now resume the uh meeting back to order at uh ten forty-three A M and we're all good to go, yeah, all right, go ahead, Paul, thank you very much for the for the way.
No, through Chair Rock, um, again, in front of you is uh my update, there's just a few little things I'll highlight and mention that are non included. Um, I do talk about how we've looked at the budget and what has been completed to date, what's to come, uh, the one thing I will note for council is we do have budget deliberation next Tuesday, the intent of that meeting is to make some decisions on some of the motions that have been passed. Um, additional motions could be made, other changes could be requested. Uh, you, there will be a number of reports on that uh meeting agenda that should highlight and and kind of close off all the information that's been requested. I will say though is, if you, if there is additional information that you require to make some decisions uh for that meeting and and you'd like it in advance, feel free to email uh in advance of that meeting and then so we have some time to prepare a response or getting any information that you need uh to support any decisions that you that you will be making that day. Uh, the agenda will be released by the end of this week, so if uh you're, you review that that agenda over the weekend and you feel like you have any questions, um, feel free to reach out on Monday and uh that would be ideal, hopefully early Monday, then that could just Monday and Tuesday to to get any information to you. Um, there, just want to make one comment, there is a typo as I was reading uh the report for the audit for the twenty twenty-three statements. Um, we anticipate that the auditors will be presenting in April, it says January, um, typo, I should say April. Uh, for twenty twenty-four, they are tentatively scheduled for May or June, depending on can everyone schedule? And then they will be presenting, I mean, statements in the summer or at least in September. And that gets back on track. Uh, only other thing I'll I'll just mention at a very high level here is uh obviously the political climate is a little unstable in terms of tariffs, costs and um, and just to note that we we are monitoring it and, you know, until something's a little bit more concrete, we don't know how it's going to impact us, but there is conversation happening across the municipal sector, uh, some of the organizations like A M O are having these conversations around how we can respond as a municipality, how we can plan going forward, potentially some advocacy uh to support municipalities on any cost increases that are to come. So, you know, there is stuff happening in the background on this and when, whether if there are any concrete impacts that happen to the township, we will update council on those. Clearly, you know, we're looking at a steel tariff, uh, whether or not that impacts us here in Canada, it's to be determined. When we look at construction of facilities and purchasing of major equipment and vehicles, these are all things that could be impacted and we will need to monitor going forward. That's it, so any other questions in terms of the report, happy to answer.
Just to, through the chair, question regarding what you just said with the thing of the steel and that's happened. Um, the vehicle we got ordered, are we kind of going in that's what they are or is it the thing that can happen with clouds that's coming back? They want extra with all the
Uh, through Chair Rock, that's a a very good question and and this is all very early, but um, you know, we we do have a contractual price. Now, what I think is is we should be doing here in the next few days is is reviewing what those contracts state in terms of external circumstances that sometimes you know, some companies will put in, so we'll we'll report back, but I just want to say this is very early, we are aware and and monitoring uh the situation.
And this, Chair, one more question, like with a public meeting with a paper or other, I mean, with an assistant, did did you get quite a few folks for the questions from the public regarding that, and I added this, I mean, they were talking about it, but uh, you'll make that go over that with us all before you start, go over things that some of the inputs.
Um, through Chair Rock, that's a a very good question and and um now that I, I think that I didn't address it in my reports coming out, but we also didn't get any comments, and so um I can put a a note in the presentation or the report, but we did not receive any comments uh written, phone calls, verbal, other than the the questions that were asked around the audience.
If you have any comments, questions?
Oh, uh, loops, whenever.
How beautiful we see you, thank you, Paul.
Thanks, thank you.
Received with thanks, thanks, Paul, Council Johnson, any comments, questions, all in favor? Perfect, thank you very much, Paul, I appreciate it.
Thank you very much, Chair Rock. Uh, I just want to go over a few highlights in my report and then I'm happy to answer any questions that uh the committee may have, so um, just some highlights from two thousand and twenty-four, we had a very busy year. Uh, we had nineteen regular council meetings, six committee of the whole meetings, twenty special or closed session meetings at council, two emergency council meetings and five committee of adjustment meetings, so. Twenty special or closed session meetings at council to emergency council meetings and five committee of adjustment meetings. So. Quite busy for everyone, including council. So thank you for all your hard work throughout the year attending these meetings and. So that's, that's really great. Um, also in twenty twenty four, we received thirty FOIs. Uh, that's the most that the township has ever seen. Um, all thirty of those FOIs have been processed and the files were closed. Uh, we have received one FOI so far in twenty twenty five. Uh, that's currently been worked through. On the complaint side of things, uh, we have received one new complaint. Uh, since our last meeting, it's regarding a mailbox and uh, staff are currently working through that with the complaint. So I should be. Should have a satisfactory solution, like sure. So we're just to let council know where that is. Um, as I mentioned earlier today, uh, Tammy Francis is here with us in the meeting. Uh, she is our policy intern from Ontario Tech University. Um, so for the winter, Tammy is working with us to undertake a review of policy eighteen. Uh, which is the opening improvement of road allowance policy. Uh, as you know, we've gotten quite a few requests under this policy and the policy is quite old. Uh, it's pre-ambiguation for sure. Uh, and it's really not efficient or effective for the municipality or. Uh, the rate years for making requests on those policies. So. Uh, we're looking forward to the work that Tammy is completing to do a full scale review and bring us back a modern policy presented. Uh, further to that, the department has completed the sale of a section of the Sixth Line Road. North Dart to the adjacent landowner. Uh, that was all outlined in Barla twenty twenty four seventy two. Uh, and the sum of that sale is a hundred and twenty four thousand, two hundred and twelve dollars and twenty four cents. Uh, councillor asked me to report back on that. So uh, that's the number. I think that's uh, pretty great. And there is another section. That we're currently working through the sale on. Uh, and hopefully I can report back on that to the committee uh, by the next day. Other little highlights, we are organizing a full day report writing workshop for our staff at the township. Uh, to take place on March twenty sixth at the Duro Community Center. Uh, and we are also inviting staff from other municipalities to attend. Um, so we're looking forward to that. We've had a good reception from other communities who wish to send staff. So we're just ringing up our internal numbers. Um, before we can send out those other invitations. Uh, further to that, starting next week, we are going to be undertaking a study of the walk-in traffic to the office. So it'll be a month long study. Uh, we'll keep track of how many people come in per day and what. Uh, they're attending the office uh, to do, what type of questions they're asking, taxes, building, planning, whatever it is. Um, we haven't done a study like that in an exceptionally long time. And uh, I think it's really important to know what type of services we're offering at the front counter so that we can. Um, make sure we have uh, the information necessary and the training necessary to answer those questions. Uh, we'll report back on that uh, once that study is complete. Those are the highlights and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you very much for doing. Comments, questions, members of the committee?
Yeah, through the chair. Uh, and the people can be working through those uh, FOIs to recharge them for that?
Yeah, through the uh, the chair. So there's a five dollar maybe for a fee to file an FOI. That is an application fee. Depending on the nature of the request, uh, there may be additional fees charged. Um, the uh, the act says that we can charge fees for uh, the search and preparation. Of FOI materials. We don't typically charge fees until the fees reach a hundred dollars. Um. Just because if under a hundred dollars, it's just not worth the process of trying to collect that. Um, but over a hundred dollars we do, and we also ask for uh, estimates. And they have to get deposit. That ensures that they're serious about their request and that our staff time is not being. A very labor intensive property and the fees we're allowed to charge, except by the province, are not cost recovery. Um, so we are, we are lost.
And should you, another question that when we up and show the properties that are out to six, like the, the right way there. There was other issues with that property, like for instance, the box and that. Have they resolved or were you saying that that has nothing to do with us?
That has nothing to do with this process.
So that's true.
It's a, it's a different process entirely. Uh, the township uh, may pay a pardon, but at, at this point, it's outside the purview of my report.
Again, set the, oh, yeah.
Wait a second. Um, if I threw me, please, thank you. Um, the cost that you gave us there. It doesn't matter exactly, but was it, is that, is that just the property or is that through the staff time and the fees and everything else that they had to accumulate also because of all the costs were on that?
Yeah. Uh, so through you, the chair. Um, so the cost of the property had the cost of the uh, legal fees. And other fees built. Uh, we don't charge for staff time on these projects. It's just not, it's not part of our policy. Um, so we don't charge for staff time. Uh, but they did have to cover the cost of the survey, the appraisal, uh, and all of the.
And my second question was going to be about that because I know we did discuss the, the two docs there and some, but. But I thought that was trans- or some other addition to the doctor or something. Yeah, but I know it was after the one holster to the other property, which still. Going to be good or removed. So I have the last of our hands or whether that's someone else.
Yeah. So there's other processes going on about those and they're outside of the.
Great. All right. Thank you. Let's, all right. All those questions?
I think I'll, I'll make a motion, uh, whenever you're ready is. All right, well, setting, setting the report with, uh, thanks.
Excellent. And Council Johnson, second. Any other discussion? All in favor? Perfect. Thank you very much, Martina. No, up today. Um, okay, C A O.
What is your, sir? Thank you. Through the agenda, members of council, uh, I report to think relatively straightforward, but I have a couple of highlights. I'd like to draw your attention to and or some further information. Uh, so administratively, uh, recognizing that we did close the office for Christmas, which is the, the holiday period of Christmas. That's pretty straightforward, but I would like to uh, recognize is that the, or, or make you aware of and public awareness. Uh, the offices, the administrative offices will be closed again uh, this Monday for the family day holiday. So. Just as a reminder, if you happen to plan anything with your family, that would be good.
Okay, I'm just, I was saying.
Watch out. Take the day out.
Friday would be great.
Um, a couple of other elements I'd like to sort of draw, uh, let you uh, bring you in on. Um, from a human resources perspective, um, so there's two uh, two items. Um. We uh, acknowledge Christina's retirement at the, you know, her last work day will be on the fourteenth. In the interim, we've engaged uh, D M Wells to provide some uh, high level planning resources to us should we require them. Uh, in the interim period and we are currently um, um. A job posting up for uh, the planner to, to replace. That job uh, will close on the seventh of March and we hope to replace that individual shortly after. We anticipate. Uh, based the way that the market is going, uh, for planners that we will be receiving, uh, we'll get a junior, someone in a junior capacity probably and, and likely. Uh, if I anticipate the timeline, um, uh, there will be a new, hopefully a new graduate from one of the Kansas universities and uh, and. So we expect that that will be filled in our people physically. And or uh, if you get someone with experience, that would be even better. And they may start a little bit ahead of, ahead of that, but. At the, at the long end, we expect sort of shortly after you sort of have another. Um, the other human resources announcement I'd like to make, um. We have a, an administrator, our administrative assistant for uh, recreation, public works and C A O's office. Uh, as uh, we brought, I know we onboarded a new individual in last summer in, into that role. Uh, and I'm very pleased to say that Ashley has finished her probationary period uh, very positively and she now may. Full fledged member of the department. I'm sorry, I hope they she wasn't not doing full fledged and not doing all the work uh, that was necessary, but. That's always a good news story. I like to highlight uh, when staff successfully accomplish a goal. Um, uh, finally, I uh, the only other thing I'd like to draw your attention to. Um, you know, all of the other divisions who made the reports today, I think it's important to highlight things like. Uh, public opportunities for comments on uh, the official plan, uh, that red line item, that information is available on, on uh. Municipal website. It's a Peterborough County initiative, but I would encourage all of our residents uh, and members of council. Uh, to engage in that, in those areas. Uh, and a couple of updates. Uh, we have a very busy council meeting coming next Tuesday. We have a number of managed planning files that are being wrapped up. Uh, that day and budget deliberations. We anticipate all members of senior management will be at that meeting to answer any questions you might have through the deliberation period, uh, should they happen. Um, and then uh, a couple of other sort of higher level Peterborough County activities. Uh, we're preparing, Peterborough County is preparing uh, to release uh, a, a new R P. Uh, or, or uh, I'll be generally new. I think they've gone through this process before. Uh, for legal services that we participated in the past and the intention is for this just municipality area of the township to participate again. Uh, in that uh, in, in that process to uh, see where the. Provide, I think of a significant number of concerns. Other than that, um, there is also, I, I, I know, uh. The manager of public works didn't actually highlight this, this piece, but I believe that there's the information on our website or at least the link. Uh, related to the waste collection process, uh, or that work that think that the county is in review. There's an opportunity for the public to participate uh, in the certain, that survey as well. And I would encourage both members of council and the public to be engaged. Uh, because the more information that Peterborough County has, the easier it is for both Peterborough County and. Uh, our, our township to make a decision and do it to pay the report coming forward in the next, not too distant future, not probably uh. Uh, in February, but I would say by the end, towards the end of March, related to waste uh, collection services, our current. Current status of our contract and some uh, requests for a direction from council as to how you want to move forward with the. Being said, uh, that's my report today. Happy to take any questions you may have on that or any other matters.
I should take one. To the chair, just on the planet.
Yeah.
We, we can still use the county, is that right? The, because we have our own person and staff, they all set the kind of thing.
So uh, through the uh, chair to council, we still, we, we are, we, we, even with some planning services with the in-house. We still have resources. Uh, we still use the resources of Peterborough County planning and, and to currently do so really. Um, you know, the, you, I. I think as we sort of look at, at Christina's retirement and, and, and. Um, you know, what we may bring into that role, we will rely on our sole on Peterborough County resources. Yeah, those aren't free resources to us. We have to pay for them anyway. Uh, we pay by the hour for them. And, and so, but we will continue to use them um, for township specific.
My, my understanding, I'm kind of wrong. We, a lot of times we didn't have to pay.
That's you, the chair. Um, so we did use uh, Peterborough County uh, during quite a bit. Um. They very, for us, it was great because they charged us a very normal amount. Um, but that wasn't what their intention was. So that was, that, that wasn't the way the policy is supposed to.
I mean, before, of course, they didn't charge you.
They were late uh, the cost.
Just have one comment question and just maybe going back to Martina rather than talking about the conversation here. Uh, public comment period seemed closed on Monday. Will that change back to Friday? Maybe extend to Tuesday or how was that?
So we're going to read the chair. So whenever we have a public holiday on the Monday, the comment period always extends to Tuesday.
Excellent. Thank you very much.
Just, just one uh, question, I guess, through, through the chair. Uh, how, how, how was the public works building? We're on track there. You're on track for it.
Oh, sure. Through the, through the chair to the deputy mayor. Absolutely. We're working our way through that. We're. Now, for period today, so we're working uh, with some local and as I noted in the report. Um, so we have to sort of working on two different tracks. We're trying to uh, engage some public uh. Project management to sort of get us through the, some substantial work that needs to be done, but. Uh, we also recognize the need to have a good site plan. Uh, and uh, and positive relations with our neighbors. And so we've engaged some local engineering firms, certainly at the direction of council. Um, to help us through that process. And so we're working with that as well. So I think it's working on two separate tracks at the same time. Uh, but it's moving forward in a positive.
Okay. To the chair, just to comment on that. Um, the, they'll, are, are, we, are we kind of looking at a new plan or adjusting the plan that they had down as far as the structure of the building? Like uh, through the changes that may be, yeah, going to be done and then all of a sudden we go off a few years and nothing done.
So uh, through the chair, Council Johnson, that's part of the reason why we're trying to engage some project management. So it's not straight. We're not going to take the plans that we have already received and just build that building. Recognize when we had that presentation in the, the late fall, uh, there are a lot of questions with council. And so I think, you know, I think what we're, are, are, what we're going to do is, is. We understand what the general footprint of the building needs to be, which it allows us to move forward from a site plan perspective. Uh, but I also recognize that there's lots of questions from council about what the, that actual goes into this, the stuff that goes into that building and. Also recognizing that when those plans were done and it over years ago. Um, they reflected. Standards, uh, both of eight years ago. And so we have some work to do for updating purposes and I. So my intention is using the project manager to get in front of council with a, 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 a bit of a brief to get your feedback as to what you. Forsee what we want to pay for to go into that kind of a building, uh, to help us, uh. So is that better of a roundabout way to answer your question? No, it's not said in stone what, what the building looks like or what goes into that building at this point. There will be some council input on that. I don't anticipate that it's going to be. A long, onerous process to get there, but certainly uh, an opportunity for council to be.
Reason I say is that, um, a couple of things come in as, for instance, the, the building that's there now, the police are. So we have side marks where we want there. But not just that, the lines used upstairs.
Yes.
I mean, last night, so I mean, I'm just having to see if uh, if the uh. If they will fit into the fire department answer. So I'm just saying, I have holes, catch, we need to look at it down the road.
Uh, just a response to the Council Johnson. Yes, I couldn't agree more. Uh, down the road is not too far. Just want to be very clear like it's not sort of, you know, I would imagine by the middle of the year, this year we'll have. Some information in front of, of council and some decisions made so that we can move this project forward in a relatively rapid manner.
Any other comments, questions? I'm good. I'll to the chair. I'll, I'll make a motion to receive report. Thanks. All right. I'll say, any discussion? All in favor? Excellent. Thank you very much. All right. I'm not going to be, be too far away with Mark. If you want to, uh, again, extend our thanks to Tammy for uh, joining us. Uh, this is your first committee to hold as we get, but there were any comments, questions or? I'm not, I don't want to put you on the spot. I just wanted to add anything that you wanted to add or ask questions about how we do this process. Now will be the time.
Um, not really. I just want to say thank you for having me, accepting me here. And hopefully everyone had a good policy for it.
Perfect. Thank you very much. All right. Uh, moving on. New business requests for the next meeting. So um, if anyone has anything they want on our next committee, the whole meeting. What kind of timeline would you like ahead of time, Martina? Now or within a couple of weeks or?
And so through you, uh, the chair, the, the deadline would be the Tuesday before that meeting, but if it's something that requires a. Kind of the research or a staff time to uh, to work on.
This much time as well. Perfect. All right. Thank you very much. Uh, call section, we have none. Our next meeting is our council meeting on February eighteenth, which is next Tuesday. I don't know why it didn't take us. I'm lost with the deep meeting. Uh, and if there's nothing else, most of the adjournments. If there's anything else, I'll be talking. Discussion on the adjournment. All in favor? Excellent. Thank you very much. Thanks to all the staff members. Excellent. Thank you very much. Thanks to all the staff members. Uh, thanks to the committee, uh, much appreciated for, for this. Then I said it before, I'll say it again, this forum is so much nicer for us than it is in council because you're trying to rush things in a council meeting. This gives us a higher delegate, we do have specific questions, need to have more time, so we do really appreciate staffs input into doing this, maybe.